Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Tuesday, September 21st. Welcome. And Charlotte, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Aronson?
Present.
Here.
Ms. Kulan?
Here.
Dr. Steinberg? Dr. Thomas Markison?
Here.
Here.
What's?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Thank you. And I'll state for the record that our board member, our fellow board member Ari Steinberg is homesick this evening. It is not COVID, but she's modeling good behavior by staying homesick and is sorry to miss the meeting. Amanda, can I ask you to lead us in the pledge, please?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any revisions to the agenda order, so we'll move to public communications. I invite Rodney to come forward. And you can come right up to this podium over here with the microphone. It'll... Yep. It'll pick you up as soon as you start speaking. So please start by stating your name and address. And keep an eye over on Charlotte because you have three minutes, and she'll hold up a yellow card when you have a minute left and a red card when your time is up.
Hello, everybody. My name's Rodney Bull from Hartford. First, I want to praise the West Hartford Board of Education for creating such a safe and welcoming environment for our children. I have had the opportunity to graduate from West Hartford School System in 1994. That great school system has since changed. Forcing our children to wear masks is abusive, unhealthy, hinders normal learning and development, and has been proven scientifically not to protect our children from the spread of the China virus, COVID-19. Please do what is right-
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you need to keep your mask on when you speak.
Okay.
Over your nose as well. Thank you so much.
Please do what is right and unmask our children. On June 1st-
Sir?
Superintendent Tom Moore literally said he wants to indoctrinate our children with critical race theory ideals. WEHA has decided our children-
I'm gonna have to ask you to pull your mask up or-
Why?
We have a mask mandate in the town of West Hartford, and it needs to be on.
I have it right here.
That's part of the mandate, sir.
Let me talk.
I will let you speak when you follow the mask mandate.
Let me speak. No, stop trying to control people.
We have rules in Town Hall.
This is my rule. I can't breathe and talk when the mask is over my face.
You can send us an email.
So, respect me.
You can go home and send us an email.
You can respect me.
I do respect you, sir. And I ask you to respect the rules.
All right, I'm gonna continue talking and stop being abusive.
I'm not being abusive, sir.
Yes, you are.
I'm being polite, and I would ask you to do the same.
I can't talk with the mask over my face.
Then you can go home and send us an email.
Go home. You go home. Okay.
Thank you.
On June 1st, Superintendent Tom Moore literally said he wants to indoctrinate our children with critical race theory. You're an evil man within their ideals. WEHA has decided to teach our children to hate our country and to indoctrinate our children by hating their race if they're white. That's what you're doing. Please remove policy 1800, equity of education, or whatever the bullshit you're doing, as it is evil, racist, and damaging to our great society. I call for Superintendent Tom Moore to resign for indoctrinating our children with lies and their controlling our children's health choices while he is an obese and unhealthy racist.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
You're a racist.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board? You can come forward, one at a time. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Banashik, and I live on 329 Cumberland Road in West Hartford.
Can I ask you just to pause just for a moment, please?
Yes.
One moment. We're just gonna recess for one minute. Be right back. We're going, excuse me, we're going to go into executive session. Tom? Come on back. We're gonna go into executive session. Can I have a motion, please? Moved by Mark, seconded by Liz. Any discussion? We're moving into executive session to discuss a safety matter. Thank you. Okay, we are resuming the meeting at 7:12 PM. Thank you for your patience. And you can restart your time. Please restart. Thank you.
My name is Alexandra Banashik. I live in 329 Cumberland Road in West Hartford. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Superintendent Moore, thank you for your response to my email. In support of children wearing masks in West Hartford Public Schools, you referred to a large randomized trial led by researchers at Stanford Medicine and Yale University, and the results were published in September 2021. For those who are not familiar with the study, it was an intervention study, and it was done on 350,000 people from villages in rural Bangladesh. Bangladesh. Do you know the top most polluted countries? Number one is Bangladesh. Number two is Pakistan. Number three is India. How can you support mask mandate in germ-free American schools with the results from a study based in Bangladesh? I don't have anything against any of the three countries. In fact, I traveled to India, and I love that part of the world. But you cannot simply compare West Hartford Schools with Bangladesh or India. In addition, the study showed some effectiveness of surgical masks versus no masks, but the difference between cloth masks and no masks was not statistically significant. As you know, our children wear cloth masks. So once again, I request you, Mr. Moore and the Board of Education members, to provide a relevant study that shows that cloth masks are indeed slowing the spread of the coronavirus. Mr. Moore, in your email, you also mentioned that removal of mask mandate will not happen anytime soon due to no vaccines available for those at elementary level. But why would we even think about vaccinating elementary school children, or middle school, or high school children if this virus is not a threat for them? Majority of the young people develop mild or no symptoms. But let's say that we do wait for the vaccine for elementary school children. With that approach, I see two scenarios. The first one is that for the next 20 years, our children, and if we're blessed, grandchildren, we will be wearing, they will be wearing masks in schools. At the end, we do want to know the long-term effects of the vaccine before we encourage anyone to take it. There is no way that CDC, DPH, FDA, AAP could provide a list of long-term adverse reactions to the COVID vaccines. As of now, we know short-term adverse reactions that adults could experience. One of the adverse reactions to the COVID-19 vaccine is death. More than 14,000 deaths due to COVID vaccine-
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have been reported at virus. And that takes me to the second scenario. The vaccine for children, once approved, probably soon, will be mandated at the elementary school level.
I need you to wrap up, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our children will be subjected to an experimental injection with no known long-term side effects, or they will have to find a different source of education other than the public schools, exactly same as their teachers right now are required to take the ethically questionable-
Thank you very much for speaking this evening.
Thank you so much.
Are there any others? I just...it's fine. I just want to remind you to keep your eye out on our clerk so that you can make sure you stay within your allotted time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jean Wigan. Thank you for allowing me to speak here again today. I feel the need to reiterate some of my talking points from the last meeting. Why are we treating COVID in schools differently than the flu when they pose the exact same risk to children? COVID and the flu result in comparable hospitalizations. They lead to equal pediatric deaths, with flu actually being higher than COVID deaths. Why are we wearing masks in school for COVID, but we didn't wear them for the flu? Why are we promoting peer pressure and adult pressure among our children for the COVID vaccine, but we didn't for the flu vaccine? Why are we social distancing in school for COVID, but we didn't for the flu? Why do we require students without the COVID vaccine to quarantine following COVID exposure, but we didn't require children without the flu vaccine to quarantine following flu exposure? COVID poses no more risk to children than the flu. COVID is not transmitted heavily in schools, and children are generally asymptomatic or have mild symptoms. At an August 27th White House press briefing, CDC Director Rochelle Walensky said cases are not propagated in the schools. In fact, schools tend to be the safer places for children than communities in terms of COVID spread. In contrast, what risks do West Hartford protocols pose to our children? How many students are struggling with anxiety, depression, and suicidal thoughts due to quarantining, isolation, social distancing, wearing masks, and pressure and exclusion from peers and adults? We know that in April, anywhere from 30 to 47 children with psychiatric needs waited in CCMC's 48-bed emergency department. At that same time, CCMC expected to flag 20,000 children for suicidal ideation, a tenfold increase over 2020. We know New Haven, sorry, I'm out of breath a little bit from this. We know Yale New Haven Children's Hospital saw 12 to 26 patients daily in March for behavioral health. By contrast, in 2019, they saw one or two a day. How do COVID protocol risks compare to COVID virus risks? In August, there were 21 pediatric COVID admissions to CCMC. In July, there were eight. In June, there were zero. In May, there were five. Keep in mind that in 40% to 45% of those hospitalizations, the children were admitted for something else. Why are we weighing mental health risks against COVID health risks and protocols? There are currently 17 children with COVID-19 in our schools and 18 quarantining. Did you know that you would have to quarantine kids 50, or excuse me, quarantine kids 50 million times to save one life, per recent LA school data? Many children in West Hartford are suffering as a result of these COVID protocols. Some will develop long-term mental health issues, some will be hospitalized, and others will consider suicide. As long as you maintain these protocols, the mental health of these children are on your shoulders, Superintendent Moore. Stop subjecting our children to unnecessary trauma for a virus that poses no more risk to children than the flu. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board this evening? Any other members who wish to address the board?
Hello. So I need to, I think, say my name and address correct. Marina Creed, 87 Outlook Avenue, West Hartford, Connecticut. Thank you for welcoming me up. I wanted to follow up on my remarks and email from the last meeting, along with inquiring about carbon dioxide monitoring in our classrooms and the importance of optimal ventilation and filtration practices. Our committee would welcome the chance to speak with the Board of Ed and partner on implementing best practices for school ventilation in advance of the winter months. Together, I'm confident that we can make a substantial enhancement to the safety of our children, our teachers, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I do need to remind everybody, while you're in Town Hall, while you're in any indoor space and public space in West Hartford, you do need to have a mask on. So if you're not willing to put a mask on, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. And so I'll be direct and let you know I'm speaking to you in the back against the wall there. There are, you know, I understand what you're saying. However, there are certain rules that one must follow to remain in Town Hall, and this one is that you must wear a mask, and it must cover your nose and mouth. Otherwise, you're going to need to leave. I apologize. You can go home and watch us on TV. We're gonna have to get security, please. We'll take a pause while we wait. Thank you. We will move now to unfinished business. We don't have any unfinished business. Oh, I should have, I'm sorry. Were there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Okay. Now we'll move to new business. And the first item is setting the date for the June 22 graduation. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education vote to set the date for this year's high school graduations for Tuesday, June 14, 2022. And I will turn it over to Superintendent Moore.
Sure. As you remember, last year, the law was passed that we could set graduation date earlier in the year rather than waiting to see how many snow days we do, as long as there's been 180 days planned to the graduation, which means that the last day of school is Monday, June 13. So this is technically a day after the last day of school, whereas if there were no snow days, that means there would be one extra day to have graduation, but it would be offset by exam week. We could do it the Thursday night. Just a reminder, graduations can only be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday typically in West Hartford, as custom. Could be Monday, but for setup for Safe Grad, that's one of the things that gets in the way. People need time. So we thought about the Thursday before and met with the principals to talk about it, and they just felt like if we had enough snow days that pushed school till later in that week, to have to set up Safe Grad a week and a half before the end of school could be a disruption to the school environment to have to do it, trying to do it. Set up graduation outside could be a problem as far as seat rentals and everything else, and just having them set up for multi-days because of sports events that could still be going on. So we felt like the 14th was the best date to plan for. Doing it Tuesday, the 14th, also gives us the opportunity to have a rain date on the 15th. Last year, as you remember, we had a rain date, which was the first time we had done that, because previously, we just planned on moving it into the gym. I think that the rain date works better typically, and I think it's a, it saves us time from setting up a dual graduation in the gym, because we always set up both. And this way, basically, if we saw two days of rain, we could, and the 15th was going to be the rain date, it would be the rain date, rain or shine, and if needed, we'd move it into the gym. But this allows us the chance to have the 14th and the 15th, and either day is a possible graduation. So that's the recommendation, to set graduation date for Tuesday, June 14.
Thank you. Are there questions? Mark?
I didn't think I'd have any questions, but I've been on long enough to know that we never really could set the date because we have to wait till April something, Tom.
April 1st.
April 1st to set the date. And, you know, a lot of parents complain, we need it soon, soon, and, you know, traveling, people want to come from far distances, grandparents and such. So I guess my question is that now, this is unprecedented. We've never had it going out this far. If we had, say, something like the October snowstorm that we were out for a week and things like that, how will that still impact, you know, and then on top of that, maybe snow days?
Yeah, it wouldn't impact the seniors. And truthfully, graduation would stay that day, even with snow days or otherwise, because you have to plan for 180 days from now that those students would have had 182 days, 180 days. This actually would give them, where 183 days out, so it builds in. Three days, they'd still have 180, but it wouldn't even matter if they didn't get to 180. And the issue with seniors at that point is they're already having final exams during that time period. So a week leeway doesn't really, with the seniors, they've already taken a lot of their exams. A lot of them, one of the other problems is that June is a big time for orientations and people going off to their colleges, their colleges in the 20s. A lot of those happen. So we don't want somebody to make that choice about graduation. So this would lock it in for the 14th, and that would, we'd live with that no matter what, unless something extreme happened, of course.
Other questions? Liz?
I have a general question. Coming from another state where I went to public school, and it was always a fix, the first Friday in June, is that, I mean, I know that must be a state thing, but has that ever been discussed, having more of a fixed date that you excused the seniors from that rigid 180 days? Because just what you were saying, they have to go to orientation, they have other things that they have to do to prepare for college, and having this floating day is like, is a hassle.
Yeah, that's something. I grew up in a similar environment with 165 days, I think it is, in Massachusetts. This change was made by the State Board of Education two years ago. It's, that was kind of their compromise. They didn't want to move off the 180 days and separate that, but this compromise allowed us to set it from 180 days so that snow days didn't affect the last day. So I see, I see where you're coming from. I think the answer is if you set the graduation early in the year, it's not always gonna be that same Tuesday or Wednesday. You're right. But by setting this, you know, if we get in the habit of tradition, which I think is appropriate at the second September meeting of the year to set the graduation date, kind of kicking off the year that way, you can lock it in on that. Maybe it's always the Tuesday of the, of that last week. So that would be helpful, I think, for people to lock it in, as Mark said.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to set the high school graduation date for Tuesday, June 14, 2022?
So moved.
Thank you, Lorna. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Liz. Any further discussion? If not, I will try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And the ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to item B, adjustments to teacher and administrator evaluation processes. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Moore again.
I'm gonna have-
Welcome.
Andy and Paul come up. I mean, I'm sorry. Rick and Paul are coming up. This is the Adoption and Flexibility for Implementing Connecticut Guidelines for Educator Evaluation for the 2021 to 2022 school year. This is because of flexibilities that the state is allowing us right now, and we had to put in these amendments. And I'll let our two gentlemen explain how these came into being.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure for Paul and I to be here this evening to talk through our teacher and administrator evaluation plan and the subsequent flexibilities that we would like the board to adopt for the- to adopt for the 21-22 school year. Before we get started getting into the details of the presentation, we wanted to take a moment to thank members of our Professional Learning and Evaluation Committee, our PLEC, which is a group comprised of teachers and administrators, for their work this past summer analyzing all of these changes proposed by the Connecticut State Department of Education, and then recommending that we bring them forward to the Board of Education for a vote this evening. Also, wanted to thank Natalie Simpson, who's our Assistant Director of Human Resources. So her tireless commitment to supporting all of our teachers and administrators with their professional practice, particularly as it relates to our evaluation plan, is very, we're very grateful to Natalie's leadership through, over the last eight years. So I will begin with a quote from our Superintendent of Schools. Every child in West Hartford deserves to experience great teaching and learning in every classroom, in every school, every single day. And this is the premise of our evaluation plan, and that is, to ensure that our students are being taught by the most highly effective teachers, we have developed an evaluation and support plan that builds human capacity and challenges all of our teachers and leaders to aspire and reach excellence in their teaching practice in order to provide a superior education for all of our students. So in terms of background, the CSVE convened the Educator Evaluation and Support 2022 Council to begin the process of reimagining Connecticut educator evaluation in its entirety for this year and beyond. So we are in Phase Two of the state's three-phase strategy. Last year was Phase One, where the, the ESS, EES, I'm sorry, worked on these flexibilities that are before us this evening, and they approved those flexibilities on June 2 of 21. Our, the third phase of the strategy will take place all of this year, and this group will continue to assess our educator evaluation plans throughout the state of Connecticut, and they may make further changes that we will consider for next year and beyond. So we could be before the Board of Education, before the end of the school year this year, or the beginning of next year with further changes to our educator evaluation plan. As I mentioned, the PLEC worked this summer analyzing these changes, and they unanimously agreed to adopt these changes as a district. These flexibilities allow us to make adjustments to certain aspects of our plan for this year only, and must be adopted in its entirety. So Paul is about to talk through some of those flexibilities. There's changes in our observation practices, our student learning objective practice. We had to adopt these flexibilities in its entirety. We couldn't pick and choose what we liked from certain aspects of the plan. And this does require mutual agreement between the PLEC and Board of Education. PLEC, as I said, did unanimously support this plan, and the board hopefully will vote tonight in support of it. Areas of the plan not mentioned in the flexibilities will continue as usual. So I have a copy of our current evaluation plan, and as you can see, it is quite extensive. So we will integrate these flexibilities into our current plan for this year.
What time are you guys wrapping up the meeting tonight?
It's probably 9:30.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Did everyone hear that? There will be no more questions after 9:30.
So.
Before Paul walks us through the nuts and bolts of these flexibilities, what is important
for all of us to understand is that we, as teachers and leaders, will continue to prioritize our focus on social and emotional learning, overall well-being of students, staff, and educators, continue to provide equitable learning opportunities for all students, enhancing culturally responsive teaching and learning practices, and striving for academic achievement for all students. And you'll see these areas of focus woven into the flexibilities that Paul is about to discuss, and you'll see it in our current plan today. So at this point, that's the background of why we're here this evening. Paul will walk us through those flexibilities, and then we will turn it over for questions at the end that the board may have prior to voting.
So good evening. Thank you, Rick, for that introduction. As you read in the report, we kind of go through in detail what the overall changes to the plan are. And essentially, when you look at teacher evaluation specifically, there are two big components. There's teacher observation and practice, which forms a kind of a practice rating, the doing of the teaching. And then there's a section on student learning outcomes, kind of the impact of the teaching. And the flexibilities that are before us for this year impact both of those large segments of our plan. The first of which is observation frequency for teachers. And the big part of this three-phase plan that Rick's talking about is an effort on behalf of the state of Connecticut to get away from this limited number of formal drawn-out observations, which are positive, they're definitely very useful, but they're dramatically comprehensive, and you can sometimes get more of a dog and pony show if you're only going in once or twice in a year for a long period of time, as opposed to what the state is targeting, which is more frequent, shorter observations, getting in, getting into classrooms with great frequency, and that's something that we always strive for. So we looked at those flexibilities, as you read in the plan. We are looking to accept them, but what was most interesting, when we think about our teachers that are in a non-tenured status, where we're really taking that close critical look at them, and/or when you look theoretically at teachers who might be in a targeted assistance, our PLEC, our teachers came forward to say, hey, we think we want to make sure that we can exceed those state flexibilities, which was allowed. You could, you had to, as Rick said, you had to accept everything, which was a set of minimums, but you could exceed those flexibilities. And they voted for, to add observations, formal observations for non-tenured staff and for staff, if any staff were to land into any form of targeted assistance, which generally is a very small number here in the district. Our observations as a whole continue to focus on the same best instructional practices that we have been supporting through our professional learning for a number of years. So that is realistically a summary of the largest part of the change to the performance and practice. On the student learning side, as you may recall from last year, with, you know, districts across the state being in various forms of total remote, hybrid, some schools being all-in, the state said, we want to, we want to focus our student learning indicators in and around social, emotional learning and student wellness. We are not going to have a focus last year on achievement. In fact, there was question at some point if they would still have the state assessment results and so on and so forth. This year, what the state is doing is saying, we will go back to academic achievement indicators, but we don't want to let go of the opportunity for us to measure students' social, emotional learning, the classroom environment. We recognize that these things are still very, very important. So they've taken a more holistic approach to how they're looking at learning outcomes. They're allowing for different departments and disciplines to have multiple indicators of measure that go beyond what formerly had only been standardized assessment. And this was a challenge for us, quite honestly, if we think about, and I'll use our music department as the example. We don't have formal structured assessments in sixth grade music. So we had to come up with a form of an assessment that made sense in our curriculum, that made sense for students, that teacher could use, teachers could use, but we had to have it standardized in service to teacher evaluation. And these new flexibilities kind of act on that, recognize that, and talk about indicators that make sense in a content area and in a department. We, as a district, are maintaining, we recognize that we are going back to closer to normal conditions this year. We have set a priority on grade level content in our academics, and so that is something that we're certainly pushing on. But we're also recognizing all of the great work and all of the importance behind the social, emotional learning, our social justice work, that we continue to make a significant priority for the district, and we're looking at ways to ensure that we're measuring that as well with more holistic indicators, which can also include, as you read in the report, family engagement, can also include other student wellness measures in addition to academic growth and academic achievement. Stakeholder feedback remains a part of our plans. We've always had the inclusion of both parent and family feedback, as well as student feedback in those two large domains, in the practice ratings and in the learning outcomes ratings. And there were some minor changes to how we go about that and how it was weighted previously. Student feedback, you know, contained some percentage weight that was going to go into the overall score, and they've allowed us in this new system to take our stakeholder feedback, combine it with our practice rating and our student learning outcomes into a holistic, into a more holistic measure that's not necessarily numerically based. So at the end of the year, much, very similar to what we've done in the past, but looking more holistically, teachers will be evaluated on a practice rating that includes the domains that you see there. And our student learning outcomes will be inclusive of academic, social, and emotional, family engagement, cultural responsiveness, as well as the student feedback that is always included. So that's really an overview of the flexibilities that have been provided, with essentially the major changes being some of the frequency of observations, we're exceeding the minimum frequencies for the state for our non-tenured, and the inclusion of more holistic measures in our student learning outcomes, and then ultimately, the notion that all of those pieces will come together holistically to form an overall evaluation of a teacher as either exemplary, effective, developing, or not, not effective. So we open it up to your questions.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. Are there questions from members of the board? Mark?
So Paul, do you find this to be a better road laid for, for future evaluations? I mean, is this going to be, typically, when the state tells you to do something, it not necessarily, you know, because every little, every school system's a little different, things like that, they don't always come up with the best choices and give you the flexibility sometimes, hopefully, on either side for different parameters and flexibility, as you mentioned. But do you see that this being, is this a best practice that's going to outlast what we've done in the past? Is this going to be the way forward in that our teachers will be evaluated much, with a much higher scrutiny? And is it a better development for them? Are they, is this going to provide them a more, a better environment to succeed in and things like that?
Good question, Mark. I know exactly where you're coming from. I definitely see this as a step in the right direction, you know? If you go back many years, and you may remember this, when I was a teacher, first in the district, we had, for our non-tenured staff, we had pretty much formal SLOs, and we called them SMART goals at the time, but they were basically student learning outcomes or SLOs that were very much tied to achievement measures and measures of academic growth, as exist currently in the plan. But for our tenured staff, we had professional learning growth goals, professional growth options. We had, we had a much greater ability to work with our veteran staff, folks that had been through that non-tenure process, that we had every confidence in, be able to provide them essentially kind of, kind of a greater sense of, of leadership, taking initiative in their own growth. And when the new evaluation system came in, it, it was, you know, it kind of threw everyone almost in the same boat. And the number, the differences in the numbers of observations that were required was, was very small. So it kind of treated your veteran staff and your tenured staff much like they were newbies or beginners. And so I definitely see this as a step in that right direction back to what we always felt. We had a very, very strong teacher evaluation and development program, because our program always focused on teacher development. It was never a gotcha, it was never supposed to be this zinger that we're trying to weed out bad apples. It was, it was really about, you know, we hire high-quality folks, we give them really intensive professional learning, we have a great professional learning structure in the district that we can develop folks throughout the year, every year continuously. So we, you know, I think our system works, and I'm excited to see us have these flexibilities and get closer back to that normal, and I'm very interested to see where Phase Three brings us.
Liz?
Hi. My question is about the rating system, and I was wondering, this exemplary, effective, developing, below standard, was that some, did we have the equivalent of that prior to, to this system? And what is the consequence for receiving one of these ratings?
So yes, we did have, the difference with this, Liz, is now we don't have numbers. So we used to have, exemplary was a four, effective was a three, developing was a two, and below standard was a one. And we found with our old plan, we were spending more time debating the number than what we were actually seeing in terms of teaching and learning, and getting away from those productive collaborative conversations about growth. So the numbers are gone now. So now it is just, we're just going with qualitative approach. So it's in those four categories. Obviously, exemplary being the highest rated you can be, and below standard being, you know, obviously, an area of concern for us. So anyone who's in that below standard or developing range, there is a plan in place within our current plan that remains in place, where we are able to provide teachers with additional assistance and support if they happen to be in those categories. If they're all the way below standard, we, there's a program called the Teacher Assistance Plan, and that would require the evaluator to spend 45 real intense days with that teacher, working with them and supporting them, and trying to, to see that growth in them over those 45 days. And it goes a little beyond that as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Jason?
All right, thank you. I was wondering if you could elaborate more on what, what are social and emotional practices? And, and also, how, how is culturally responsive practices for teachers? How are, how are those evaluated? And what are some of the ways that, that the district supports those, that development for teachers?
Sure. So social, emotional learning, you know, we adopted the Castle framework in it, and there are a number of attributes and indicators we talk about, but within that, we do provide direct instruction along that. And, and, you know, the ultimate goal of social, emotional learning kind of relates a lot to classroom environment, how you feel about yourself, how you feel about your learning, how you, you know, whether or not you feel supported. So when you think about the work that we've done this year and last year, last year, it was a mandate from the state that every school district will ensure that they have direct instruction in and around social, emotional learning. And a large part of that was based on concern that was held pretty widespread, you know, among the educational community, that with the pandemic, with all of the uncertainty, with folks who have, who have experienced loss in their family, that when they're coming into school, is there going to really be a readiness to learn from the point of view of, I can sit there and, and I can pay attention, and I can do this, because I'm worried about so many other things? So we provide different levels of instruction, and we have our different structures, elementary, middle, and high school, and developmentally appropriate lessons that are targeting those social, emotional skills, that ability to feel comfortable, to be able to express, whether that's expressing your emotions, whether that's, whether that's expression, self-expression about your identity, whether that's, you know, who you are, being comfortable in your own skin, that kind of thing, whether that's, you know, some of the resiliency aspects, being able to deal with, how do you self-advocate when you're, when you have struggle, all of these different components. There's, you know, there's not necessarily, when you, when you think about last year, for instance, or you think about the old system of teacher evaluation, if you're for instance, or you think about the old system of teacher evaluation, if you're doing all of this work, you're, number one, as an educator, maybe this hasn't been your bailiwick. Maybe, you know, I use myself as the example. If I'm teaching algebra every day, I haven't had to think about that. I know how to establish rapport with students. I know how to set up a classroom environment, but I haven't had to directly teach these skills. So now I'm in professional development at the school. I'm making an effort to teach these skills. And I've seen perhaps a change in the environment in my class. I've seen that students are more approachable, they're, they're taking more risks, they're asking for questions, they're staying around. So I see the difference. So I want to continue this. One of the things under our flexibility plan is I'm still going to have my academic measures and outcomes that say, okay, I can demonstrate evidence of student, student learning of my content area or my discipline, but I'm also able to put forward some more informal measures about, I talk, I talk with my evaluator about the strategies that I'm choosing that are appropriate to my grade, my classroom, my content area, maybe appropriate to the school. And I'm able to put forward some measures that demonstrate student responsiveness to that, whether that be by way of student surveys, whether that be by way of some other pieces. One of the things that we're excited, we're involved in a pilot this year in a system that the state is making available to districts free of charge. We're one of the first districts in the pilot, and it's called Aperture. And what it's intending to do is it's intending to be able to design some very informal kind of screening assessments in and around social, emotional learning. And in, and so that would be able to give us some data, some student level data that says if social, emotional learning had positive incomes or was outcomes or was flat, but it also has resources when, when there is a student that you're concerned with. Here are some ways that you can intercede at a classroom level. Because obviously, we also have, you know, Melissa and a whole arm of, of her department that are, that are clinicians that have much more formalized training. But, you know, if my student just needs a little bit more TLC and I'm kind of not so sure how to proceed, I have some ready resources that I can use. Likewise, you know, our social justice work is, is tied in very much to social, emotional learning in terms of setting the conditions in which students feel comfortable. So there's, there's content that we teach, there's conversations and difficult conversations that we try to have within that. And again, our flexibilities are going to allow us to be able to provide some measures that, whether through student surveys or through other, through other means where we're demonstrating what we've done in support of that work and what its impact has been. And that's going to look differently based on kind of what your role is in a school. Is this the main thrust of what you're doing to where you'd want that to be an outcome for your work for the year? And we have plenty of educators where, where definitely that makes a lot of sense. And, or is this something that you're doing to a smaller degree and the main thrust of what you're doing lies somewhere else? And there would be the ability for, for folks to really, and it's not we're choosing one or the other. That's the whole approach of these flexibilities, is that we can have multiple indicators, multiple measures that provide evidence at the end of the day of what you did in service to your, in service to your professional learning objective and what outcomes it was able to, you know, be reflected with your students.
Yeah, thank you. I think it, you know, just the, the multi-dimensional analysis setup here provides these different ways to get at the, the classroom experience. And you know, what you, what you described is something I think we, we need at UConn, too, even, you know, that level of thinking about the student, the care for the learning environment and, and how that, you know, how that shapes the overall learning experience. So thank you for spelling that out.
Are there any other questions? Lorna?
Thank you very much for the information. I appreciate hearing how our district recognizes the fluidity that's needed in terms of evaluation. And you mentioned how last year was focused on just in terms of the well-being of how our students are doing, but now trying to merge and recognizing the achievement aspects as well. Question. With this evaluation piece and just reflecting back on past years, how have, what has been the response if there has been a staff person who may view this more as being voluntold and may not receive the feedback well? How, what, what is the way of responding when maybe more assertive efforts have to be made in trying to empower and give constructive feedback to a staff member?
So first, I just open with, this is a very limited number of, of staff that we have. In general, I, I'm happy to say, and it's, and it's not a, it's not a boast, and it's not a shirk, you know, the, the majority of our staff have very positive relationships with their evaluator, their administrator. And I think that's testament, testament to the real purpose behind our evaluation system. It's, it's not evaluation, it's not, it's not a report card that goes home at the end of a year. It's a cycle. Folks, you know, folks will see between our district goals or school goals, there's consistency with them, trying to always kind of go deeper into the next level within the work. So it's never a conversation that's just going to happen in June and be over. So there's a very narrow segment, but it does, but you're absolutely right. And it, and it kind of points back to what Liz was asking. You know, there can be a very small percentage of folks that either need a harder conversation or who may find themselves landing in a, in a category where their performance overall is either developing, more frequently developing than not meeting standard. It's, it would be, not that it doesn't happen, but it would be very unusual for us, you know, to have gotten all the way through an interview process and all of the pieces, and then you have someone who's up in front that is simply kind of not doing the job. When that happens, it's sort of like, the first step is always trying to, trying to bring that person to a realization, trying, you know, it's like effective communication, trying them to get to see what you're seeing, trying to get them to see that you're also on their side and you're working to help improve them. And that can be done in multiple ways. A lot of, a lot of the things that we'll do is we'll bring in a complimentary observer, complimentary evaluator, so they understand, boy, it's not just that Rick's picking on me because he doesn't like me. Let's bring in, let's bring in this other set of eyes. That can often be bringing that individual out to do some peer observations in other classrooms. So you can, you can show them your peers and say, see, this is kind of what I'm talking about. This is what we're after. That can be sending them to professional development, putting instructional approaches with them, any number of things that we can do. But if at the end of the day, push is kind of coming to shove, that's where the teeth of the, of the educator evaluation plan comes in. And Rick talks about that in terms of, if I get to a point where we need to be putting very specific things down into a written plan, very specific targeted objectives and areas for improvement, and those, those issues become on a timeline, and there are different timelines based on the level of need for each individual, all those components within our plan remain as they've been. So none of those pieces have really changed with these, at all with these flexibilities. So we, we do, you know, at the end of the day, we operate in service to kids, and our, and our number one thing is making sure that we have the best for every child. So our, our plan provides us that and continues to provide us that even under these flexibilities.
And I think one of the things, kind of, sorry, but one of the things, the kind of end result of this, because there's that path of support that's important. This isn't designed to eliminate people, but it can. I mean, and that, that's one of the things that we have to understand. Any evaluation by your boss, that's what it can come through. But it's, it's with department supervisors, then it's with the principal, and then there's these intensive assistant plans. And then there's the two tracks of the non-tenured teachers. So somebody new has four years, basically for us to decide, is this person excellent? Do they show the potential for excellence? And that, to be honest, our bar may be higher than some other places. I mean, that, that is, I, I don't back away from that statement. And so we have a conversation with them after we meet, and we've gone through the non-tenure review process before, where we meet with the principals, department supervisors, and we decide, is this person right for West Hartford? Is it a pedagogy issue? Because pedagogy issues you can really work on. Pedagogy you can make better. Is it a will issue? Is it who somebody is that doesn't really fit what we're doing, doesn't really fit West Hartford? In which case, we have the honest conversation. We could go to non-renewal. Typically, when we tell somebody, we're going to go through the non-renewal process, they'll resign effective the end of that year, that, rather than a public non-renewal process. The tenured teacher, the idea that this process does give an avenue for a tenured teacher, once you've gone through all those steps, to be removed, we have done that before. And that basically is very similar until it comes down to, at that point, it's a meeting with Rick, myself, the principal, and the teacher to talk about their future here and that honesty, that after all of this work, we do not see you as fit for West Hartford Public Schools. And then there's a process that goes along with that. But typically, again, that person, people don't want to work where they're not wanted. So the typical outcome from there is that person moves on, typically. But there is a process here for, if they don't choose to.
Thank you, thank you all. It's good to know that the bar of expectation is never a matter of, matter of just settling. So good to hear that.
Any other questions? And we need to vote on this, yes? Okay. So I will seek a motion that the Board of Education vote to approve the adoption of flexibilities for implementing the Connecticut Guidelines for Educator Evaluation 2017 for the 2021, 2022 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Jason?
Thank you, Jason. And a second?
Second.
You guys don't want to state the motion? No, I'm just kidding. It's all right. Any further discussion? If not, I will try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, saying aye? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move to staff communications and reports, and it is time for the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Thank you. You know, we're three full weeks into the school year now, and we have just had a great start, I have to say happily. People are following our protocols, and our protocols are working. When we have positive cases, those positive cases have come from the community and typically from families. People will see multiple, multiple positives. They typically tend to be multiple family positives when we're sending home something. But what we've seen is that our mitigation strategies are still working. And that's something, you know, we're in communication, you know, I'm a member of network of superintents across the country, and some in different places have seen spread in schools and pretty significant spread in schools. We haven't seen that here. Our kids have been tremendous. I'm so thankful to them for the way they've handled this, working with masks. And, and the truth is, it's, it's a really positive feeling. When you're around, you can feel this community spirit again that's being rebuilt and that kids are glad to be together. And, and I'll say again, the vaccination rate at the high school and middle school level for us, it's over 90% now have engaged in at least their first shot, 84% fully vaccinated. And what this has led to is the number of kids that need to go into quarantine at the high school is so dramatically limited compared to what we saw last year. Sports, we've seen, like you see game after game postponed, delayed because of positives on a team. We haven't had those same issues. Now, I'm not saying we couldn't at some point, but basically with what we're seeing from our kids, we've been able to have a sense of normalcy as we go through this school year. That has just been tremendously refreshing and has allowed us to really go back to school and go back to the way it has been in the past with, with those good things and with some mitigation strategies still. So I, I'm really thankful to our kids because everybody told me last year and this year what kids wouldn't do, what they wouldn't be able to do, and our kids have stepped up completely, as have our families. And, you know, seeing them out on the field, seeing them together, I defy anyone not to smile when they're walking the fields at the end of the day, or just walking through the school, walking through a cafeteria. There's just a great feeling right now in our schools, and kids are happy to be back. And I think a lot of those fears, anytime we start something new, there's trepidation. And you guys know, you get the letters, I, I get the letters and the emails and this trepidation. And then we start, and a lot of the things melt away because we see the way things are going. And things have really been positive. The one negative across the state that affects us in some ways is the staffing shortage across the state. It, it's our greatest challenge. You see it in the hospitality industry, certainly. You see it in a lot of industries. The bus driver shortage in the eastern part of the state is in a crisis state right now. I know five superintendents that are in, in a situation where they have had to either cancel school or they're in significant, they're basically in violation of student IAPs because the transportation is part of a student's IAP, and they don't have monitors and they don't have drivers for special education. They were, me, I know a group of them were meeting with the Commissioner of Education this evening about that topic. I do want to thank First Student because they have been a great partner. And I especially want to thank our drivers for showing loyalty to West Hartford because they have. They've, I mean, some of the people that you've known, our family have known some of the same, you know, I see, I, I saw a bus driver on the first day of school who I've known for 25 years now. He used to drive the buses for the teams that I coached, and he pulled over and saw me, and he said, I'm back out of retirement to, they asked me if I'd come on. How could I say no to West Hartford? And that spirit is just really, really thankful of people coming together. So we haven't had the same impact that a lot of communities have had, but we're keeping an eye on it. We, we have difficulty substitutes. Again, a lot of substitutes are loyal here. I know of a neighboring community that had 40 accidents one day and could only get five substitutes. This is something that is a reality. And, you know, for one of the first times in my career in Connecticut, I can say, there's a shortage of teachers. And there's always been shortage areas. We've never felt it in West Hartford. We've always been, we put an application, we put a ad out, we get a flood of applications the next day. There's a significant shortage, especially in the area of special education, especially in social, emotional health. I think a lot of districts have done a lot of hiring in this area, which is a good thing, but that's led to a shallow pool. And then you're at the position now with the question ethically, do I want to pull someone from another district at this point in the year? Because there has to be some level of togetherness amongst our superintents. We have to, you know, it's not just our kids, it's all kids are our kids. And, and this is, this is a problem that the state is going to have to face because it's especially affecting our urban schools. And I, I have significant concerns, as do their superintents, about their staffs being pulled out of their schools at the start of this year and not having teachers to teach classes. We're talking about aides and paras. They're talking about classes without teachers. So it is a significant problem that all of us that care about education are certainly concerned with. Speaking of staff and staffing, our vaccine mandate for staff takes hold next Monday, the 27th. That is the governor's date. If not vaccinated, any, anybody that works in our schools, either contractor or employee, will have to go, undergo weekly testing. I strongly urge all of those people, please take care of yourself, take care of your families, and take care of our kids, and get vaccinated. There's still time before next week to begin that process. So with that, that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Questions? Mark, then Jason?
Yeah, not necessarily questions, but some comments. You mentioned about the 84 to 92% in the high schools and middle school, and I think Amanda could attest to this. We were at Hall High School today. I don't think I've seen that many students playing sports and parents. In fact, KP and Aiken neighborhoods might get complaints about they had to park that far away to come in and watch their kids play sports at Hall High School today. It was, I, I mean, every field It was, I mean, every field at that entire place was, had something going on. And it was really good to see. And, you know, it goes down to that really, that 84 to 92% that you're talking about. Because, you know, just like education, as I like to call it, is a three-legged stool, teacher, student, family. You know, those families with this higher rate, you know, that they're supporting the vaccinations and such. So, it was really good to see that many people. Everyone was complaining, like, I had to walk a half a mile just to get here. It was a good thing, because that's what was going on at Hall today. So it was just, it was nice to see. And, you know, I can only imagine that, you know, people are feeling, you know, that gives them the freedom to do what they need to do. So it was, it was well, you know, documented today at least. If they had a drone flying over Hall High School today, I'm telling you, it was amazing.
Actually, we could have Dancy send his drone over and take film. I think, I'm glad you bring it up, because there is this natural trepidation when you go outside and you see a crowd, because we're so not used to seeing crowds places. And to re-center our thoughts to, this is good that our kids are taking part in some, this is good that the community's coming together again. Both of the principals, I've spoken to at all the events, and Jason, the athletic director, about just how good the crowds have been, how big the crowds have been, but respectful of each other, respectful of the rules. And I just think it's great for West Hartford. It is certainly heartening, Mark. Thanks for bringing that up.
Jason?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry I missed that scene. I did want to ask you if you could reflect a little bit on what you had thought of before about lunches, about lunchtime? And how, you know, with all students back in, how has that, have, you know, other strategies come to mind or have seemed to work out? And, you know, given the vaccination rates and all that, how has sort of your thinking changed around lunchtime?
Well, this was certainly one of the things that we were afraid of. What would we see in terms of quarantining from lunches? Would we see spread tied to lunches? And again, we're only three weeks in, so I'm not making promises for 40 weeks based on three weeks. But I think what you see in our cafeterias, things are well-planned out. We have the benefit of cameras, so we know who was where in most of our large cafeterias certainly, so you could go back and look. So it's not guesswork. So you're not saying, okay, well, we're going to have to take 40 kids because we don't know who is there, and have them all in quarantine. Utilizing alternative spaces, so not just the cafeteria, but spreading out beyond the cafeteria, using the outside certainly is something I think the kids like too. I think the families like, I think spreading out, sitting outside is a good thing. But there's days like this week where we're going to see some rain, where that is impossible. As I said, kind of the first day of school being a rainy day, it almost might have been a good thing to get that out of the way, so we weren't thinking, what do we do during a rainy day, that we had to do that right away and say, okay, this is our protocols, this is what's working. And certainly, the elementary principals are constantly learning from each other and sharing ideas and sharing what's working in the building. No two buildings are alike, no two cafeteria are alike. You know, you look at even, so our two high schools are similar size, but just the geography of the cafeterias, the way the tables exist at Hall are different from the chairs and tables at Conard. The lunch lines are different in how they operate. So I've seen definite improvement in the lunch line shortening and things getting moving quicker than they were at the start of the school year. But certainly, we're learning. I think one of the things I would have said that I'm hopeful for, because obviously, we're seeing, hopefully, looking at the numbers, it seems like we're seeing a plateauing, maybe a decrease, which is great. A lot of people warn that that will exist for six to eight weeks, and then we'd see an increase. There's also significant reporting that by November, our elementary school children will be eligible to be vaccinated, and that could blunt that same rise that we saw last year and could make. Because again, there's no one mitigation strategy, it's all of them. And nothing's perfect. There's something, somebody could say, you could do this, and that's true, we could do this. The ultimate mitigation strategy is remote, and we don't want that. We want a suite of mitigation layers that build on each other. And so, so far, they're working. I hope that answered that.
Yeah, thank you for the leadership and the flexibility and adaptations and all of it's great, thank you.
Liz?
Yeah, the other tricky area is the buses. Have you seen, I know last year, a lot of the parents were driving, especially, like, specific to elementary. Has that continued, or are the kids back on the buses in full capacity?
I wouldn't say they're full capacity. The buses are more crowded than they were last year. There's certainly more people taking our buses. I mean, that's going to happen because you take the 16% that were out of school, you add that into the transportation. The benefits on the buses is masks worn on the buses, ventilation from the windows, I mean, one window here, one window there do work. There's studies about airflow and how that works on buses. And if we do have to go into quarantine, whereas some places are trying to do pure seating charts for every single bus, that's really difficult with kids to get a seating chart for every bus. So we have cameras on every bus. So anytime something like that happens, not only can we ask the child, who are you next to, who is in front of you, we can actually look at the camera and map out the distances on the bus and see that. So that's helpful.
Amanda?
Thank you. Were you all done? I just had a question. Could you expound on the staffing status of the nutrition services?
Yeah, it's another area that we're short. And we're advertising in front of the schools, we're advertising Rick's Posted ads out there publicly. And anybody that wants to work, it's a flexible schedule. And we'd love to have you come in, because that's another shortage, Jerry, that's, we're struggling with.
Is it, is it in one particular position or one particular place?
No, because we'll move people to make it. I mean, everything with nutrition services is system-wide, because we'll move if we have the issues, and there's some overlap of the timing of lunches and things like that. We just need, we need cafeteria workers across the board, kind of.
Is there a tipping point where we're going to have trouble functioning?
We're okay right now. We're okay right now. We need more. I mean, what you'll see is maybe more easier to put together lunches, you know, that kind of thing. But certainly, we're hoping we get more employees that can beef up that department.
Lorna?
Thank you. Just a comment. When you were giving your report, appreciated all that you shared. And you also made reference to some of our neighboring towns and some urban communities that are struggling. And just want to highlight how appreciate, how much I'm speaking for myself, but I imagine my colleagues would view the same, how we appreciate that level of empathy that continues to be a part of our school system here. Yes, we certainly do encourage our students, our staff, to be the best they can be, but I think it's important to model appropriateness and trying to be the best who we are, and also to recognize that we cannot just be me, myself, and I, we have to think of those who live in this community with us. So, thank you so much. It was a small piece you made, but it spoke volumes. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We will move to staff reports and board discussions, and we will have a report on the elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief grants, the ESER grants. So I'll call up Andy, Paul, Rosina, Melissa, and Liz.
So as they come up and prepare to give this report, and we've kept you informed this summer as this had to go into our ESER application, we haven't received final word on our application yet, but we expect to get full approval from this. As you hear this presentation, I want to thank all the members of my team for the work that went into this this summer. I especially want to thank Liz Hewitt for her work in writing grant after grant. I said to her just this morning, we had a meeting this morning, and as she walked in, I said, "I feel like I give you too much to do." And then I want to give you one cautionary note, because we have this ESER funding, and we're using this funding, we're using it for teachers. You know, we had class overages, as we said, and they'll go through all that we're using it for. It does dry up. The Board of Education, I worry, in three years faces a budget cliff. So that's something that's just plain real, and it's kind of two budget cycles away from us facing what could be an exceptionally difficult budget season if we have to replace all of this. So that's one of the reasons why we're trying to be very careful about how we spend it in non-returning expenditures. But that's hard, because some programs involve people, because our kids need that help now. We hope that these investments will lead to improvement over time, so we can move on from that. So with that...
Good evening. Over the past 18 months, you've heard us talk many times now about ESER funding and ESER grants, and each of the individual grants and how we're using those to help us meet the challenges of the pandemic. But we thought it would be beneficial tonight to look at all of our grants, and really explain the overall plan that we have, and explain to you how our funds are being used for our students, for their academic renewal, for their social and emotional needs, and to keep them safe and healthy in our schools. So as we look at our agenda, we're going to briefly touch on several items. Legislation and the funding that we have been allocated, stakeholder engagement, our educational priorities and the strategies that we're implementing to support those strategies, and then answer any questions that you might have. So the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, which we're going to call ESER for ease of pronunciation, was established by the Federal Cares Act back in March of 2020. And the goal of that legislation was really to provide emergency relief funds to educational agencies to address needs and unexpected costs that were resulting from the pandemic. The funds were allocated to districts across the country based on Title I funding methodology, and under that funding, West Hartford was allocated $902,000. In subsequent rounds of funding, under additional federal legislation, the CHRISA Act and the American Rescue Plan, we were allocated an additional $4.3 million and $9.7 million respectively. So in total, $15 million of ESER funding has come to the district. But in order to receive this $15 million allocation, we were required to submit applications to the state, although the amounts were given to us, they were not entitlement grants. We had to prepare detailed strategies and explain to the state how we plan to implement those strategies to meet the priorities and the goals of the state. So we spent a great deal of time internally discussing how to best use these funds for our students. But we also engage with other partners and outside stakeholders. And if you flip to the next slide, you will see some of the partners that we met with. Back at one of our June board meetings, we presented our continuation of services and our opening plan to the board, and sought input from the public at that meeting. Over the course of the summer, we also met with the Parent Teacher Council, the Special Education PTO, we met with the Bridge Family Center, the West Hartford Education Association, and we really sought their input to make sure that the plan was fully addressing the needs of the community. And the information that we gleaned from those meetings really helped inform our application. And as we go through and explain how the funding will be used, you'll hear about some of that. Now, not only did these groups meet with us to discuss options and ideas, but they also provided letters of support, each of them did, for our final plan. And each of those letters of support was included with our application to the state. In addition, we conducted a staff survey, which we got a pretty favorable response on. Overall, the plans that we had had an approval rating of approximately 89%, certainly with certain areas receiving more support than others, but we're very pleased with that level of support. So I'm going to let each of the members of our team discuss each of the educational priorities, and then the strategies that we're implementing to support those strategies. And I think we'll let Paul start with our academic renewal.
Sure. So, lot on this slide, and each of these, you have a description in your board report that talks about them. But as you know, as we've talked about earlier, you know, a significant chunk of our funding went right away to reduce class sizes, where we were able to hire more teachers across all levels and essentially operate below our class size guidelines. And that work is obviously already in place, it's been reflected in the number of sections. And I know we'll report on all of that on October 1 with our October 1 numbers. The area that I'm excited to talk to you probably about is in and around some of our specialist positions. We were able to hire an additional reading interventionist teacher, typically at each of our elementary schools, at each of our 11 elementary schools, we have one full-time reading specialist who has a specialized certification. And then we also have what was previously called an early intervention teacher, is now called literacy interventionist teacher. We had a shared position between two of our smaller elementaries, and given what we expected and knew to be a larger academic need this year, we hired an additional reading interventionist teacher full-time, so that ones, so that those two schools didn't need to split a halftime person. We also, as you know, have hired, we have math coaches that lived at the elementary. We had one of our math coaches who was on special assignment with the State Department of Education. She returned to us, her position already existed in our budget, so we were able to hold that position. So we have the two reading coaches at the elementary level. As we've had, we hired in, with your support in previous budget discussions, two math coaches at the middle school level and one math coach at the high school level. We do expect, after the ESER grants come through, that some of those positions may go away, but we've talked about, at least at the budget table, we'll talk further about the potential longevity or not of those positions long-term. In the short term, we're excited to have that support live in the classrooms, so that we can support our teachers with grade-level instruction and dealing with any learning loss through differentiation strategies. Turn it over to Melissa for some of her.
And so, last time we met, I talked a little bit about the guidance received by the state around recovery services. So we have allocated funds to support us in recovery services for students who might have experienced interrupted, delayed, or inaccessible supports due to the pandemic and possibly being virtual, or, you know, services being delayed while they might have been remote. So we have allocated funds to support us in a data-driven process to ensure that any regression or recruitment, that we're able to support students in making up for any lost ground they might have experienced. Also, we have allocated funds for our early learning program. We opened two classrooms that are primarily funded by a Smart Start Grant at Webster Hill Elementary School, and we offset some of the other additional costs using our ESER funds to support three additional paraprofessional positions, a part-time special education preschool teacher, and a part-time speech and language pathologist to support students who might have individualized education plans and learning needs in those early learning classrooms.
In our opening of schools report, we gave you kind of a detailed picture of the summer learning opportunities, the expansion of the ESY for special education, our summer connections, our ESOL programs, and some of the other enrichments. So I won't belabor that now. I will just sort of hit on the extended day program. I believe I talked about our middle school summer program that we did this last year was modeled after a program that we were piloting in sixth grade, and that was part of an extended day program, kind of a re-envisioning of our homework centers, how we can make that be more of an engaging opportunity. And we do have plans to reopen that in the coming months across all grade levels at the middle level. We also had opportunity to take a look at what we're doing with career internships and hire in a person using ESER funds for, basically to give, to give that area of our program of studies kind of a little bit of extra oomph over the next two years, so that we can have that up and running and really expand the opportunities for children to apply their learning, especially at the secondary level, in authentic ways and in work settings.
All right. And in proactive nature and thinking about the students returning to in-person school, we wanted to proactively provide strategies, tools, supports, and resources for the social, emotional, well-being, and mental health of our students and our staff. And so, we allocated funds and resources to support an increase in our clinical staffing, and that's across all levels. So it supports increasing social work at the elementary level, three clinicians at the middle school level, one at each school, and additional clinicians at the high school level to support students. We've also doubled the size of our crisis intervention team with an additional trauma social worker. So now we have two lead social workers supporting crisis intervention and trauma supports at supports at both high schools. Oh, no, I just want to add one more thing, sorry. We also, as Liz was sharing, we worked with our stakeholder groups to get feedback on our plans to better understand the impact they see as families for students. And a direct outcome of that is the student enrichment activities. And so parents were reporting that the social opportunities for students who might not be involved in athletics has been greatly diminished during the pandemic. So in response to that, we've allocated funding for student enrichment and non-athletic activities that will be provided across all levels. We'll have both a fall and a spring offering for the next two years to support students who might not be involved in athletics and joining in social activities and enrichment opportunities.
I think the only thing that I would add to that is that we're really trying hard to keep our focus on mental health and providing multiple platforms and ways of connecting with students, providing a touch point for them to check in on them, and then also investing in partnerships with organizations and agencies that help to facilitate student growth and development, positive, healthy, youthful growth and development, and helping them, students who are reluctant to find their spark or really immerse themselves on the athletic field or on the performance stage or in community service, and just really understanding what their needs are, but hearing their voices to better understand it and inform them. So we recognize that our parents and our caregivers, they have been navigating the complexities of, you know, this pandemic between home and school, and we know that, you know, the full return to school has been great, and it was necessary, but, you know, it is new for every one of us this year, for our students and adults. So we'd be remiss if we weren't attuned to how the disruptions in children's schooling have impacted them and have left many families with questions about recovery of lost learning and instructional time with teachers and how to engage students and keep them motivated and manage frustration. And so we have deliberate investments in our family and community connections efforts, home-to-school liaisons, making sure that we have people that go out and do home visits and really connect with families and hear what's on their minds, but also not waiting, not, not being proactive so that we discover, we identify barriers and we remove them, rather than having parents ask, families ask for services or where to find them or, you know, how do I get technology, making that information available. And so informational electronic resources, making, letting them know where that is, where they can find this, where those resources exist, but also being more innovative about how we get that information out, whether it's, you know, through internet, whether we are posting on our website, and everybody's going to visit the website every day, not everybody's checking and reading lengthy, not everybody's TikToking, but finding out preferred methods of communication for our families so that they get the information that they need right at their fingertips. And so we're building better platforms for that, too, and that's a deliberate investment. And then our partnership with the bridge, I mean, that's just been such a generous and meaningful and, and very wise resource and support strategy that we have in place because those resources, we're bringing the bridge into our schools as a more permanent fixture and support. And so I'll, I won't go into too much detail about the social justice curriculum. This was, this, this item was really intended to highlight the need for a person, a dedicated staff member, to keep our work going. We invested a lot of time in designing and building the social justice and social emotional learning curriculum. And, you know, as, as great as it was to develop these partnerships and collaboration and learn from each other, it really isn't a sustainable way to continue to do this work because, you know, our times aren't predictable. And so we need a curriculum, we need teaching and learning that is responsive to our students as things happen. And so we need somebody who can be dedicated K through 12 to have that kind of vertical articulation about what's happening in our classrooms and providing that ongoing support for curriculum build and design for social emotional learning and social justice education. And it is, you know, just to clarify, it's, it is pro-social education that we're pairing with social emotional learning, and we see that as our moral imperative. And I don't want to go too much into that because next month we'll have a presentation where we'll bring student voices, our educators, our administrators, and their experiences. They'll illustrate what that looks like and feels like at the board table, but they will, they're not, they're not going to get into, you know, distinguishing what is critical race theory, although I believe that that is important because, you know, in order to defend it or support critical race theory, you got to know what it is. And so our aim is really to educate the public about what we do, what we see as our relentless pursuit and our statutory obligation to equity for all students. And so we continue to invest in social justice and pro-social education, social emotional learning, resources and support. We're well ahead of publishers and curriculum experts out there. They, they're not, they've not caught up to this formula that we have created, and so we're building it ourselves. Again, it's not a sustainable approach. Paul talked already about the Career Pathways Facilitator. What I'll add to that one is, you know, I, I was in the school today reading a book called Just Ask, and a student said, and this is the second time I've heard this now, so it must be a thing. I live in West Hartford Public Schools, Connecticut. I wouldn't dare argue with a six-year-old, but, you know, they made West Hartford Public Schools a hub of, you know, their life. And so I think that's pretty special. We have so many community resources, and so we're really trying to leverage through this pathways facilitator, leverage some of the resources and partnerships that we have with the Economic Development Office, our municipal agencies, and we've got some good models like Future Educators of Diversity. We can reinvigorate our former Corporative Work Experience Program and just find more innovative ways to create pathways that really align with our vision of the graduate for our students. So that's, that's that on that page. Oh, I didn't talk about teacher diversity, I'm sorry, Paul. Can I just say one thing about the, the teacher diversity program and our efforts? So we've made deliberate, deliberate investments in teacher diversity strategies, recruiting, retention, and supporting our students, it's our teachers. It's one thing to get them, but it's really important to keep them and support them. And so one of the programs that we're really excited about that shows up in the ESER funds line item is the Teacher Residency Program. Next year, we will be full partners in the Teacher Correct Teacher Residency Program. It's an 18-month program that attracts and recruit aspiring, people who aspire to be educators, in particular educators of color, and, you know, they're preparing them to transform schools, and it embodies collaboration and equity and mentoring support. And so we're excited to be a part of that. Had the opportunity to teach a course in that program this past summer on families and cultures, and I got to learn a lot about their experiences. And at the end of this, they're guaranteed positions because they are well-prepared and equipped to come into our schools and transform our schools so that we are more equitable.
And so one of the more sustainable structures is providing professional development to our current staff to provide some more of those sustainable structures beyond when the funding ends. And so as we allocated funding, one of the ways, one of the areas that we really wanted to provide some support is for the structured literacy, which I'm sure you've heard over the years through the IDA International Dyslexia Association guidance, and then the state and national movement around dyslexia of identifying it under IDAA and supporting students remediation who might qualify as a student who is identified as having dyslexia. And structured literacy is, is the recommended way for us to systematically support students as they overcome some of the difficulties they might have with decoding. And so there, the International Dyslexia Association is using the term structured literacy for what you might have heard as Orton-Gillingham, Lynda Mood Bell, Wilson approach, but it's basically the systematic structured instructional practice to support students who might have dyslexia or have a disability in the area of reading. And so the funding would be allocated to support teachers and professional development around some of these structured literacy programs and to acquire additional resources to support teachers in remediating any reading difficulties that students might have.
Two other areas to highlight under our staff development and professional learning, the first of which is our college counseling. College counseling is obviously the bailiwick of our school counselors, but what's interesting, it's the one area that while it is probably the most visible to families in general, it's, it's the part that they generally need to learn on the job. They don't receive real professional training for that within, within the school counseling certification programs that exist. And we saw an opportunity with ESER as we collect feedback from our students and from our families at the end of the year relating to really the insurmountable challenge of being able to know every child, every student, their personal interests, and find that just right post-secondary placement for them, be that college, be that jobs, or other opportunities. We, we wanted to be able to invest in our school counselors and provide them some real authentic training where we're bringing them out to college campuses, having them meet with the acceptance officers there, having them get a real feel for schools, become an expert at a particular school or a particular region or a particular niche in terms of, hey, this is, if, if you're interested in culinary arts, or if you're interested in, you know, molecular biology, or whatever that might be, that you know the program for that, someone in the high school knows that, not that every counselor's going to know that, but we'll be able to partition, divide them out, be able to provide them with some opportunities. So, and, and that's something that realistically kind of goes beyond what we would normally be able to provide, and it's just an opportunity that we see a need for in the district. We think that our, our families and our students are deserving of it, and we want to be able to utilize our ESER funding to help support that. The second of which you see on there is computer science, and as you know, you've heard us say here at the table before, we've, we've named computer science as an area of focus for the district a couple of years ago, prior to the pandemic, kind of putting a obstacle in our pathway on that, being able to give it our full attention. We want to be a state and/or national leader in the area of computer science. I would, I would, I would argue that we're probably a leader right now in the state already in terms of our programming, but we've only just begun to, to really uncover the potential that we have in terms of our educational programming around that. It will be a big lift in terms of how do we, how do we bring all of our teachers, specifically our pre-K five and some of our 6-8 teachers and some of our teachers outside of computer science themselves, to understand how do I integrate computer science into everything that I do regardless of what I teach? Because that is the way of the future. That is the future that we need to be preparing children for because that's the world that they're going to live in. That's not the world that we grew up in, but that's the world that they need to be prepared for. So we anticipate over the next several summers, we'll have the opportunity to begin some of that professional learning, bringing in some larger numbers of teachers and kind of begin this lift, this professional learning lift that will, that will take several years to complete. And looking forward, I'm going to be bringing forward to the table Jackie Coroselli to give you a report on this in the coming months and talk about it, and she is just a bundle of energy and, and expert in this area.
I feel like we spent most of last year talking about funding for strategies to keep schools safe, but very briefly, wanted to update you on a couple of pieces. If you remember right, last year, we contracted to hire CNA, Certified Nursing Assistance, to assist in all of our schools with, with isolation, with contact tracing and so forth. This year, what we did was we continued that contract for the elementary schools, again, knowing our secondary schools are not dealing with the, the levels that they would be based on vaccination rates. And so we've continued that at the elementary level, the CNAs. They're also going to be able to help when we start doing the voluntary testing through the state program. We finally have been contacted by them, and we'll hopefully setting that up and reaching out to parents next week with the details of that. And the CNAs will be invaluable as we're going to be working at the different schools with the testing providers to do the voluntary, the voluntary testing, the screening for that. One of the other pieces that we've done is to continue funding schools and continue funding our, our PPE for protection equipment, our custodial supplies. We have those ongoing, the ongoing nature of that. We're still providing those to schools. Bob Palmer, Paul Edlin have been doing a fantastic job with their staff to make sure our schools are clean, make sure ventilation is in place, to make sure that, that everything is, is as, as the factors that we've put in place continue for this year. Eric Dancy and his people have done a fantastic job helping us with the safety, with the security, making sure masks are in place and helping make sure schools are ready to go at the beginning of the year and ongoing for that. When we also talk about facilities, one of the things, if you remember right, we talked about last year, the mandate from DPH and the suggestion to go ahead with the, with the engineering study of all of our ventilation systems, which we did and implemented them, the changes that they recommended, the repairs that they recommended. Part of the, the charges that we've, we've put in here as well is sort of the ongoing nature of that, the ongoing filters, the ongoing, the checks over the summer to make sure the systems were still running at the optimal level that we conducted as well. And then one of our facilities pieces that we also had put in place was to improve the playgrounds at the elementary. When we talk about healthy students, when we talked about encouraging kids to be active, to be outside, to play in those groups, we looked at the elementary schools and we decided that putting resources in place to, to refurbish the elementary playgrounds would be, would be really something that would, would be not only welcome, but also promote the goals that we had. So in addition to the additional shade structures and such that we've gone ahead, we've, we've allocated money for the playgrounds as well.
And the last slide we have for you is a table that details each of the priorities that we've talked about and the amount of funding that we've allocated to each of these priorities. And as you look at this table, you can see that we've really allocated significant funding to every one of these priorities. We've really done our best to leverage this funding, and our focus and our goal has really been to utilize this funding in ways that directly benefit the students of West Hartford. And our plan is to utilize these funds over the next three years to meet student needs. And that, that would be happy to answer any questions you may have or clarify anything for you.
I see. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn open for questions, and I know, Avery, you've got a question, so we'll go to you first, and I think Amanda, you're next.
I would just like to shortly comment on the need for a dedicated person for the social justice curriculum. Students at Hall have actually discussed this issue, particularly students in the LGBTQ+ community, and have shown their support for something, a person who is dedicated to continuing these curriculums in a sustainable way, and I look forward to the presentation next month.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. This is a very thorough report, and I appreciated all the detail that you had in this section. I have a lot of questions, and some of them I know will come in future meetings. So for tonight, I wanted to focus some of my questions on the intervention, interventionalist and this, and the specialist. When we talked about the math coaching, you had taught us about the model that you wanted to employ, about how part of what they would be doing was to teach the teachers so that that knowledge was a systemic learning experience for the district, which made a lot of sense so that that can be transferred from year to year to our faculty. Is there some level of that in the, in the interventionalist and specialist component also? I know some of that work is designed to work directly with students, but is there some teaching that will go, that's teacher-directed as well?
Absolutely. So I'm glad you asked that because one of the things that we've just begun to do is look at our, our reading specialist model, so more so the reading specialist than the interventionist. We added the interventionist, which is a direct service to students, but our reading specialist positions. Generally, right now, they, they balance a lot of their Generally, right now, they balance a lot of their responsibilities between students that are typically in tier three, students that need more specialized support, and being able to provide that because they have the content expertise. And then they'll do a lot with case management. They do kind of have that leadership role. We want to find ways, and one of the things I meant to mention in my comments is the number of tutors that we've also brought on. We want to be able to find the ways to be able to support students with some of the tutors, be able to alleviate some of that time for the reading specialists to also get in and kind of get into that classroom, tier-one coaching, do cycles of coaching with teachers in the classrooms. So that is a direction that we're moving. We had some professional learning this year that we were able to support through Title II funding, where we brought a lot of the reading specialists, along with some of the principals, out to a series called The Art of Coaching. That was one of the national experts on instructional coaching. Your name has slipped my mind for the moment, but it's exactly the direction we're headed.
My second question was about the, in the area of social, emotional, and mental health of students with the trauma interventionists. Is that, I guess I'm wondering how the school is receiving, particularly at the middle and high school levels, how you're receiving information about the needs of the students? I know you get a lot of referrals from the teachers, and then the bridge is also involved with some of the referrals, but is there any mechanism to directly invite feedback from parents if they feel like there's some things going on with their kids that may be more significant? And I'm thinking of parents in the community who've talked about the rise in eating disorders for students of all gender identities. I know sometimes we think about that just with girls, but it's across the board. And some of those things, and I've asked them if they've let the school know in any way, and some people just don't think to do that because they're managing things outside. But if there are larger things going on with students that parents are managing, and they have support for that outside of school, is there any way, or are you planning to send out a dedicated communication to say, you know, please let us know if there's anything that we can be aware of? Or, you know, how does that information fan out to teachers? And those kids, and you know, some of the teaching environments I've been in, we'd have faculty meetings where we're talking about kids, so we're all hearing the same information within appropriate boundaries about what's going on with kids. So even if I'm not that student's teacher, I might just be aware of that students on campus. But in a public setting with so many different classes, that's not always reasonable. We're not really structured that way. So I'm just curious about how that knowledge sharing is positioned?
It's a really good question, and I think that, you know, families are such an integral part when we're talking about a student's mental health. You know, I think as Mark was talking about, you know, the three components of how we support students, and families certainly have a window that we don't have, and we do rely on their communication sharing. And we know that many of our families are able to provide supports outside of school and support their child, but we certainly want to be aware of what those supports are so we can also support and be available to those families as a resource. We do have at the secondary level clinicians, both under special education and general education, as guidance counselors, that do provide outreach to families. Our trauma interventionist specifically is working with students who might need an at-risk assessment, so identifying students who might have made a concerning statement about self-harm, or concerns about that might indicate concerns relative to mental health. And that's where they would intervene as more of a triage model and support students at a higher clinical level. And that might be looking at students who might require the next level of care, or we might be reaching out to outside agencies if those supports aren't in place. And we're always engaging families at that point in the dialogue. We're communicating with families that, you know, we're speaking with their child, we're involving them in the communication and any future decision-making, and supporting them in accessing resources that they feel would be beneficial to the family unit and then to their child, and supporting them through the process on an ongoing basis, not just in the instance. But certainly, these clinicians have a higher level of training and are more knowledgeable about the community resources and access points.
If I could add just one, I think it's also important, Amanda, to reinforce that we are still working with and getting a large amount of information via our anonymous alert, with students being able to share concerns that they have for each other. And that's acted upon immediately by our staff, and really has become a really powerful tool, I think, for getting kids the help they need that the parents may not know about, but certainly their friends do.
I'd say that that is not just the anonymous alert program, which is great, because kids don't have to come forward, but I would say one of the biggest shifts in my career in schools, especially in high schools, is the stigma of going to somebody to talk about one of your friends and your fears of them has lessened so dramatically. It's not seen in the same way as telling, again, not universally, but students advocating for each other has shifted dramatically, especially, I'd say, over the past 10 years in what we see. And you can see that in our referrals. People think of the referrals because of more issues. It could be, but it could also be because people are coming forward more now to talk about their friends, so it's not always a negative to see that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Liz?
Yes, I wanted to have a little bit more clarification in the interventionist. So I noticed that you were adding the interventionist, a reading interventionist at the elementary. Is that one for the entire district? And is there, there's a reading specialist at each elementary school?
Correct. So we're adding one. We're going from 10 reading interventionists to 11, so that there'll be one dedicated. Previously, I believe it was Morley Norfelt that shared a half-time reading interventionist teacher under the 10 model. So with the ESSER funds, we're bumping them up to full-time staffing on their reading interventionist. Your reading interventionist will be working generally, probably with a lot of kids, what we would call in a tier-two, kids that have moderate need, but enough need that they need support outside of their classroom that the teacher would provide under a tier-one. Each elementary school does have a full-time reading specialist. So we have 11 reading specialists at the elementary school. We have reading specialists at the secondary schools as well. But we have one dedicated at each of the elementary schools already. So we have two full-time teachers that have specialty in reading working, and in addition, you know, we do hire tutors that can work with small groups of students as well. Because the, you know, mastering the foundational reading skills, you know, certainly not later than grade two, is identified as one of the most critical kind of indicators of success or potentially, you know, future struggle.
And I just have one more comment. It's just more of a comment. I was excited to hear that you're adding, or you're letting the college counselors go and visit the college campuses. I think that's so appropriate and necessary, and also just to build the relationships with the admissions officers, and especially for schools that we seem to have a lot of kids applying to year after year, to have contacts for our kids, if our, you know, be able to reach out and just have conversations about admission. I think that's really going to help our kids. So I think that's a good addition. And also, the dyslexia work, I think if I understood you correctly, you were going to help teachers identify students to regular classrooms, teachers identify students who are dyslexic, and I think that's a really great thing, really going to be powerful for students.
Great. Jason, and then Mark.
All right, thank you. So one of the things that came to my attention in my other job is that when we grew capacity to serve students with mental health needs or counseling services, that we also had other kinds of space issues. So that like when someone had a new office, say, it didn't match up with what was appropriate for that space. And I'm wondering if the district is thinking about, you know, having more staff that are dedicated to counseling and mental health services, and if the spaces that they have there are adequate for that kind of work. On the other hand, it's, this is temporary funding, and is that something that is going to fulfill multiple purposes down the road? And just wondering, are you thinking on that? And if that's more like a specific school issue, or if that's something you're thinking about across the district?
No, it's a good question, Jason. And we've been able to go ahead and to build out our resources and have space for that. Where we're running into some tightness of space is more around some buildings and more about some instructional areas, but we've managed to get it all set this year, even with the influx that we've seen in certain schools. And certainly, we have the office space and the ability to put these programs into place.
I think that's, I'm glad you brought that up, in that also the security adjustments that we've made in front offices has often opened up a little bit of space in there. We've been able to make shifts. But at the elementary school, and I want to hit on this when we do our long-term enrollment projections, because we think of, okay, this building has this many classrooms, we can have this many classes, but we need the extra space for ESOL. We need special education space. We need counseling space. We need reading specialist space. Things that didn't necessarily exist 25 years ago in terms of space, that are space needs that are real, and I think we need to do a better job. Andy and I have spoken about that, and Liz, of when we do our long-term enrollment projections, giving a more accurate picture of this is how the building's used. Because you look at Walcott, and it says, oh, Walcott has a couple of classrooms. Walcott has no room. I mean, we can't take more kids. It's, we have a matched number of classrooms to the exact number of people, so that then you get into the moving art on a cart, moving music, which isn't optimal for the kids either. You can do it for a year, but it's not optimal. So I'm glad you brought that up.
An additional question, I'm sorry. So I know these were plans that we discussed last year, and that they're coming to fruition and, you know, based on those applications. And, but I'm also thinking of, you know, I was reading over the Shipman and Goodwin, you know, legislative summary for what, you know, all the new mandates and the legislative changes that schools are responsible for. And I was looking at the piece of legislation on declaring racism as a public health crisis. And in there, there's a part of, you know, identifying schools as a point of contact for medical and social services. And I'm wondering if that discussion has entered into the district, or they're still waiting for instructions from, you know, from the state or other bodies? But the kinds of interventions and capacity building that you're doing already seems to fit, or at least go in line with those expectations and those kinds of ultimate goals. So it's just, you know, something that, I saw that, and I was like, oh, I wonder if this kind of work that is being done with ESSER funding, it can also meet those other objectives down the road.
You know, one of the, it's a really interesting question, in the way it's worded and how it goes forward, especially community health partners, community mental health partners, is that we have this space, and there are times with schools where we think, well, we can have the schools do this, we can have the schools do this, we can have the schools do this. We also have a security component to our schools that we can't have people coming and going all day. And so there's this, you know, are there points of contact that we are working with our own physician and physician contacts? I mean, I think, you know, we don't talk about some of the things, even the partnerships we've made with athletic training, with our partnerships with Hartford Hospital, just in concussion protocols, in physical therapy, where we can have our trainers at the school do that kind of element. And we can also, we always have, for students that can't get a physical, we do that component with our students. But then there's the dental question. There's all of these things that are legitimate questions that we haven't been given a true roadmap to yet, and that building security and coming and going versus the real community needs is something that I think that there's, we need better direction. I think good minds have to come together and think about those issues.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. So a little confused, Tom, when you started your, your talk about this, is that you said that the budget, the Board of Ed would have a difficult time a couple of cycles from now. I look at it a little differently than that. These funds, and I'm wondering if you're talking to these ESSER-funded teachers, that they are ESSER-funded teachers, and that there is a limited time in this budget for this, because this is specifically around that. And, you know, I know, for instance, the pay-to-play, when these funds are gone, that goes away too. And it's very clear when we talked about it back in the day, and that parents will still have to pay if a Board of Ed that looks similar to this says, yeah, we can't put that on the budget, that it's going to have to back to pay-to-play. And then, you know, we talked about different things like, you know, computer science leader in the state. Well, we were that prior to COVID. I understand we got some training, we're putting dollars toward that, but that is part of our exercise pre-COVID anyway. So, you know, we're putting these funds in here, and I'm wondering, I get it, you know, we want to have more teachers maybe trained in that, and skills that are critical to that piece, but that should take place whether we were in COVID or not. And, you know, to put it on a very limited funding for three years is one thing, you know. So I'm, you know, the college counseling thing, kind of, dyslexia was not a COVID critical piece that made, we don't, you know, I'm assuming we don't have, it was around prior to COVID and things like that, and I get thrown money at, I'm not saying that, but these are things that should be in our toolbox anyway, right? Prior to any COVID that we had, professional development, things like this. You know, like playgrounds, that will be there, that infrastructure will be there. You plant it, it's going to stay. I understand that, that's, but if we are putting forward a, because we need it, we all talked about, there's a reason the ESSER funds are available, right? And we understand that what our kids and our students and teachers have gone through. We understand that, and I'm glad that we have these funds, but does a Board of Ed really have to look at this after three years? Because, I mean, if you're having those discussions with the teachers that are hired, and they are COVID-hired teachers, that there's a limited contract there. And so how, like, what is that happening? Because, you know, why leave it up to a Board of Ed like this when we have $10 million more dollars to vote on because we have things in place because of COVID? Now, there might be things that we need to extend, you know, a board that looks like this might need to vote on and extend, but the relative reasoning behind why these funds exist is to put your assets and resources at things that need immediate attention and that get us past that. So I'm concerned about what it's going to look like three years from now, in that not necessarily a Board of Ed has a tough budget, but administrators have tough discussions.
I appreciate the question, and I understand what you're saying, and actually, you and I come from this from the exact same place. We've had those discussions, these positions that we're adding are interim positions. Then there's the reality. We've sat here, when parents have come up at budget time, when something's being removed that did exist, and we've seen what happens with the community wants some things. So you're, the pay-for-play is a perfect example. You're right, I'm going to put that back in the budget, and you're going to have, every high school parent at that point that's a senior has never paid. And you're going to be saying, you're going to be paying $150, $175 a person. That's a new thing for them. It's not a return, it's brand-new for all those. There's nobody that'll be in the high school that ever paid before at that point. So that's something where whoever's on this board is going to get pushback for that. When it When it becomes public, we're not going to have as many tutors. That is going to get pushback. When it's said that we're not going to have the same funding for a trauma specialist, that is going to get pushback. I'm not saying that, I'm not preparing for it now. That's actually, the reason you said is the exact purpose that I brought it up, is that these are all difficult things, because the more something works, the more people are going to want to have that. And it, and it's, it's going to be a difficult budget season. I'm not saying you should just put it forward. I'm just saying this is going to be the reality. That budget vote and that budget season's going to be very difficult.
So I understand that, but that would have to be the community and the Board of Ed involvement, because say, teacher A, you were hired on the Esser Fund III, your contract is up now, potentially there's no need for you anymore. That said, one teacher, and just for an example, goes away. Yeah, and we would have to, I don't necessarily even see that coming to a, to a budget vote. That's more of a administrative, you know? And I, I know what you're saying about a missing component, right? But we are taking $10 million worth and I think the expectations have to be discussed and articulated so that not only the teachers know, but the public knows that these funds and these, you know, because we can't just say, here's $10 million, we're going to have in perpetuity. We're going to have, you know, we have to manage. If, if we need said, we, I don't think, I can't speak for everyone because I've had a lot of different Board of Eds, but we really haven't said no to the mental health pieces ever, you know, when we're developing and something needs in a classroom. The Board of Ed has always been.
Absolutely.
For, you know, leaning forward on those issues and you've never not needed them. But when you add $10 million, like, you know, three, like 3.3 million a year. You know, that's, that's a big number to come back with without managing expectations and managing a, a conversation and.
That's, you're exactly right. That's the pure reason why I introduced it this way, to remind people that this isn't a in perpetuity addition, that these are there and there's going to, but you're right. You're not going to be voting on a position where we put the position up and say, add drop. No, we'll eliminate the positions, but there's going to be community pushback. We just know that because there always is.
Well, as long as those are the expectations, right? I just, you know, I can't, I could just see it saying, and again, I want to just preface, if, if we need something, I don't think this, we've ever really shied away from it because, you know, our, our students are important to us. So, but, you know, I just, I look at the pay-to-play for an example, right? Yeah, I, okay, I get it. You know, those are things that we probably have to manage and, and because people, I never really thought about it, that they wouldn't pay if they're a senior because it's three years. But when they didn't play a year, right? So those are things that I think, I think if, if there's a communication piece out there and people know, I guess, you know, you're, you're bringing up is a good example. We're talking about it now. So it's something that has to be managed three years from now effectively, really.
Liz, for the second time?
Just to, to elaborate on what Mark said, I think it is important to give people notice, the teachers notice where we can, and also things like the pay-to-play. If they're signing up online and there's a place that says, here's, you know, pay your money, we should be putting in, this is the cost, it's waived because of Esser funds. So that people realize there still was a cost, it's waived for now and you're on notice, this is a fee. So I think wherever we can keep people in the loop, this is something we're getting extra. This is not how the system works. I think that's a good thing so that people don't get lulled into, oh, this is something that we always have had and will have going forward.
That's a good point. Thank you. Andrew?
I have a question about the school to career position. I know at Conard we have a college and career center and there's a, an individual who staffs that. How would this new position be integrated to either work with them or work alongside them?
So the position I was referencing, we have currently within, and, and we have a person that works primarily within our alternative high school to reach program that services both Conard and Hall, an individual that, working under those auspices has arranged for internships and job shadowing opportunities for students. Our goal is to look to expand that, to be able to open those opportunities up more broadly at Conard and Hall themselves. And so that could, you know, in terms of where that position might become located or where you find the individual, certainly potentially within the career center. I know currently the career center is more of a, of a resource where, where folks can go down in there if they're looking to, to have, you know, career explorations that they might reach out.
Great. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. And I, I do truly want to thank all of you and obviously Tom as well, and the community and our staff for their input. You know, the, the opportunity to bring in almost $15 million of federal funding directly into our district to improve our educational experience for our students and families. It's, it is, I guess, a silver lining and I think that we've demonstrated the ability to use those funds in ways that are responsive to students' needs and reflect best practices. So thank you for all of your hard work on that.
All right, we're going to move to routine matters and approval of the minutes. I am seeking a motion for approval of the minutes of the September 9th, 2021 board meeting.
So moved. Amanda Aronson.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there a second?
Second, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Any discussion?
Gotcha.
If there's no discussion on the minutes, I will try your minds. All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the September 9th, 2021 board meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving on to information and reports and reports from other boards and organizations. Do we have any reports? I think, Amanda, you indicated yes.
Hi, I'd like to offer a short report from the Bridge Family Center. I'm the board's representative for that organization. And for anyone who might be listening who doesn't know, the Bridge Family Center does a number of things in the community. They're the contracted youth service bureau for the town. They do offer school-based counseling. They operate our family resource center, which runs out of Charter Oak, and the teen center, which runs out of the Elmwood Community Center. So the long and short of the report is that there's a lot of collaboration going on and there's a very tight partnership, especially this year coming out of COVID. The summer update, the Bridge did a lot of individual and group mentoring for, for teens especially, and there were some support offered, activities, and there was also professional development, helping kids with resumes and helping kids get into jobs this summer, which was obviously significant, not just for income, but also for time spent doing productive things that help them in the future. The teens from the teen center leadership group did a lot to enhance our campuses throughout the community. They had some raised beds outside of the Elmwood Community Center, but they actually built four more at Conard High School for raised garden beds. They built two at Smith Elementary and they built a greenhouse at the Elmwood Community Center. So once again, our teens leading in the community and, and really enhancing it in a number of ways. They did a lot of counseling over the summer as well. Our school-based community therapists were continuing the psychotherapy and the counseling that was taking part during the school year, so that didn't just drop off in the summer. And they worked with 25 students who, who wanted that support, which was obviously very timely and important. And moving into the school year, they're working very closely with school staff to ensure that students have the support that they need, not just from a clinical setting and a counseling setting, but also for their mentoring needs. And as we heard tonight, they, the Bridge Family Center has expanded its contract with the West Hartford Public School System. So a lot of those things are really in place here. They are, their school-based staff, who's already working very closely with our school staff, they're attending school-based clinical meetings and they're attending student success meetings. And they're obviously still staying very flexible because along with the school staff and town emergency staff, they're part of the response team whenever there is an emergency involving youth in our community. And the last thing I'll mention is that they're also offering a lot of support for parents, for teachers, and then they're talking about offering that for school staff as well. And they're in conversation with the, the school team and the school staff on a number of levels to figure out how that makes sense, where that makes sense and, and how that should be structured. So thank you to our school staff for, for opening up the opportunity to collaborate so well, and thank you to the Bridge staff for just taking such good care of our kids along with the schools.
Thank you. Do any other board members have information or reports from their liaison groups? No? Okay. We'll move to non-staff communications and reports and we will go to our reports from student board representatives and tonight we'll start with Andrew.
The first thing I'll mention was Conard's first football game, which happened two weeks ago now. Like other board members and, and staff here mentioned, there was a really great turnout, the Red Sea. Our student cheering section was completely filled, but also there were parents and teachers and it was very well attended. Senior class board was back to selling food as they do at these football games to raise money. And we're currently working on trying to bring back the pep band, which has always been a staple at our football games. On the drama side of things, the Black Box is currently working on a play by Neil Simon called Fools. Auditions for that were also two weeks ago and they're currently working on putting that On September 8th, there was a panel on mental health, which was brought up at the last board meeting, and that was called Keeping Our Focus on Mental Health and Wellness. And there were, there were students from both Conard and Hall at that. And that was partially organized by the Heron Project Club, which is a club that was started while I was at Conard. I think I was a sophomore and the Conard chapter has been extremely involved in the national group. So actually, a week ago, two students, Natalie Gavals and Ela Tanis, were recognized as national youth ambassadors for the larger organization. Seniors were also, some seniors were also recognized for the PSAT. There were seven National Hispanic Recognition Program scholars, four African-American Recognition Program scholars, seven commended students and four national merit semifinalists. And the last thing I'll mention, the last thing I'll mention is that senior meetings have started for seniors, at least from what I can see, school counselors and students are definitely talking a lot this year. Senior planning is starting tomorrow and I know junior planning and the underclassmen counterparts are also set to begin. And something I brought up looking forward, last meeting, is that college visits in person and virtual colleges visits have started and there were all, there were some today, there will be more yes, more tomorrow, and that will continue through early November.
Thank you. Avery?
In the same vein, at Hall High School, we've been experiencing a lot of the same great turnouts at our sporting events. Hundreds of student athletes have been beginning a successful season in sports such as cross-country, swimming and football as well. This Friday, Hall will be having a small ceremony for the College Board National African-American Recognition Program, the National Hispanic Recognition Program, national merit commended students and the national merit semifinalists at Hall. And the career center continues to offer college visits, which Hall seniors are enjoying, as well as the senior plannings. The senior day that I mentioned, the senior day that I mentioned last meeting went well and all Hall seniors were able to talk to their guidance counselors and to begin the processes of, begin or continue the process of the Common App. And in general, Hall, there's a great attitude of, there's, I apologize. The attitude of community has just been really remarkable. We've been having in-person clubs and really seeing a great turnout for that. And particularly the organization, Student Equity and Diversity Council has been able to begin in its full capacity this year and is looking forward to continuing their work.
Thank you. Future business, announcement of future meeting dates. Our next meetings are on Tuesday, October 5th, Tuesday, October 19th, and Wednesday, November 3rd, all at 7:00 PM, followed by Tuesday, November 16th at 6:00 PM here in the legislative chambers. Are there requests for future agenda items? Are there any comments from visitors? No? I would like to take the privilege of the chair and just make an extremely brief statement for the community. There are rules that we follow as a society in order to keep our community safe. Stopping at red lights, for example, not smoking in restaurants, and for right now, wearing a mask indoors. I encourage public participation in our democracy and it needs to be done in a way that is civil and respectful in order for us as policy makers to focus on your message. Thank you. There is no executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mark, seconded?
Second.
By Liz. Meeting is adjourned at 9:26. Congratulations, Rick, for accurately calling that. Have a wonderful night, everybody.